All right, let's go ahead and get started. Nice of you to join us, Mr. May. Good evening. I'd like to call the April 28th, 2015 Longmont City Council meeting in order. This is a regular session this evening. Could we please start with your call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. Mayor Protem Bagley.
Here.
Councilmembers Christensen, Finley, Levison. Moore. Santos. Mayor Protem, we have a quorum.
Nice. Let's go ahead and have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a chair reminder to the public about first call public invited to be heard, but we don't ever follow it, so we're not going to read that. Do we have a consensus? Does anyone have any changes on approval to the minutes? Or can we do that by consensus? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented for April 14th, 2015.
The vote's unanimous with, actually, it's all screwed up, but the vote's unanimous with Mayor Coombs and Bonnie Levison absent. I'm sorry, Bonnie Finley absent. I just love you so both. It's like meringue and lemon, just the perfect combination. You two, all right. Agenda revisions, are there any?
Yes, Mayor Protem Bagley. There was an item sent out at the end of last week, a Senate Bill 15135 on urban renewal boards, and that was added to your consent agenda, asking for a neutral position.
Okay. Any council comments regarding whether or not we maintain that position? Just on the consent? Okay, that's fine. So why do we bring it up now? Jeez, just trying to confuse me. Where's the mayor when we need him? Special reports and presentations. It looks like we have a group here from sister cities. Sam Safi's here to share wisdom.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. It would be nice to be with you again. This year, it is our 25th anniversary of our relationship with Chino, Japan. And I would like to report to you that we have a, thanks to numerous volunteers, including your dear wife. We have a record number of students, we refer to them as ambassadors, going to both to Japan and Mexico. We also have several people from Chino, Japan, coming to visit us. We refer to them as VIP guests. And there will be as many as eight people coming to visit. There will be three occasions where we would like to invite you in advance, and you will receive formal invitations later on, for one formal activity and two casual meetings that we will have dinner together. May I introduce to you Felipe, who is our chaperone to Japan this summer? Felipe, come on in, please. The students who are going to Japan, would you please stand and come forward? Okay, Felipe, it's all yours. Any questions before I sit down, please? Thank you.
First of all, thank you for having us here. My name is Felipe Mosqueda. I am the chaperone to Japan. And we feel very lucky to be going to Japan. And also, I personally feel very lucky to be going with my co-chaperon and these amazing age students. As Sam mentioned, it is the 25th anniversary. I personally was there for the 20th with Mr. Santos over in Chino City, which was incredible. And I think this experience is not only going to be life-changing to the students, I think it's going to set the precedent for many, many things for them in the future. And it's going to set a lot of changes for them. And now, I'm going to let my co-chaperon speak a little bit.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Urquidi. I'm honored to be co-chaperon with Felipe, taking these wonderful eight students to Chino, Japan this year. We're really excited to have this opportunity. We know that this is an opportunity to build friendships, to cross borders, and strengthen ties, as well as develop a greater appreciation for our own culture and cultures of other people. So I'm a fourth grade teacher here in town and have lived in Longmont for over 25 years. So really honored. These are outstanding students this year to represent Longmont, and we're really grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sadie Roberts. I'm 13, and I'm in eighth grade at Twin Peaks Charter Academy.
Good evening. I'm 14 years old. I go to Mead High School. And my name is Penelope Smith.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Alondra Palomares. I'm a freshman at Niwot High School.
Good evening. I'm Antonia V. Hill. I'm 15 years old, and I go to Silver Creek High School, and I'm a freshman.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Raitzig. I'm 14 years old, and I'm a freshman at Niwot High School.
Hi, I'm Claire Kingsley. I'm 15, and I'm a freshman at De Siderata.
Hey, everyone. I'm Jay Olson. I'm 14 years old, and I'm an eighth grader at Mead Middle School.
Good evening. My name is Wes Urquidi. I am 16 years old. I go to Skellon High School, and I am a sophomore.
So that's our group. And I think each one of them has an incredible talent to share with us and to share with this trip. And now, I'd like to introduce Vanessa Scarsiga and ask her to come up to introduce her group. She is the chaperone to, one of the chaperones to Mexico.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us. We are very excited for our Mexico trip. I am one of the chaperones. My name is Vanessa, and I've grown up here in Longmont. And I am very fortunate to be a part of this association, as well as having such amazing students. They each have a very specific talent. And we're all very excited to go to Mexico in July. And I would like to introduce my co-chaperon.
Good evening. My name is Bob Urquidi, and we've lived here for 25 years. My wife is the other co-chaperon to Japan, and I'm really excited to be able to go to Mexico. I would say that I grew up here, but 25 years hasn't been enough time for me to actually grow up yet. So it's exciting to be with these wonderful young people. They are so skilled. If you had a chance to read their resumes, you'd see what I mean. They're just great ambassadors for this great city that we live in, and we really look forward to our trip. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Taylor Caraballo. I am 14 years old, and I am in eighth grade at Mead Middle School.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zach Beckwith, and I'm 15 years old, and I'm a freshman at Silver Creek High School.
Good evening. My name is Will Murphy. I'm 14 years old, and I'm an eighth grader at Westview Middle School.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sebastian Palomares. I am a sophomore at Frederick High School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joshua Palomares, and I'm in eighth grade at Simpson Middle School.
Welcome, guys. Congratulations.
We have a special guest we would like to introduce here to you. Anna, would you like to come up, please? Anna Gomez was the student ambassador from Mexico to Longmont last year, and she has come here for two weeks to study English. So she would like to say hello.
Well, good evening. My name is Anna Sanse. I came to practice a little bit my English. I came last summer as a Mexican ambassador. I'm staying with Alondra, who's going to be a pandi here. And well, I'm really excited of being here. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of April 27th through May 4th, 2015, as Young Child Week in Longmont. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation afterwards. Linda Kopecky, from the community programs coordinator, we're going to ask that she come down and accept the proclamation and get her picture taken with council. We'll do your remarks in a sec. Whereas, Longmont knows more than ever about the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their learning and development. And whereas, everyone has a role in helping young children be successful and reach their potential, including neighborhood organizations, businesses, nonprofit agencies, government, and of course, families themselves. And whereas, we realize that our community has a profound responsibility to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. And whereas, we recognize that children's opportunities are our responsibilities, and we recommit ourselves to ensuring that every child experiences the type of early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote early learning. Now, therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor Protem, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April 27th through May 4th, 2015, as Young Child Week in Longmont. And we invite all citizens in the community to acknowledge the importance of young children reaching their potential to the vitality of our community. Linda, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mayor Protem and the city council. I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing our youngest residents in Longmont as so vitally important to the community as they are. And I wanted to explain who's with me. These are members of the Bright Eyes Coalition. This is a collective that works on early childhood in Longmont. It's not just one city staff member, but it's truly a partnership across Longmont. And I have, I also have representatives from the National League of Cities. So Katie Whitehouse, who's senior associate with the National League of Cities. Amy Fontana, who's with the library, Children's and Teens Section. Elektra Greer, who's head of Children's and Teens at the library. Tanya Rucker, who's a program director. Whereas, Longmont knows more than ever about the importance of children's earliest years in shaping their learning and development. And whereas, everyone has a role in helping young children be successful and reach their potential, including neighborhood organizations, businesses, nonprofit agencies, government, and of course, families themselves. And whereas, we realize that our community has a profound responsibility to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. And whereas, we recognize that children's opportunities are our responsibilities, and we recommit ourselves to ensuring that every child experiences the type of early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote early learning. Now, therefore, I, Brian J. Bagley, Mayor Pro Tem, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April 27 through May 4, 2015, as Young Child Week in Longmont, and we invite all citizens in the community to acknowledge the importance of young children reaching their potential to the vitality of our community. Linda, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing our youngest residents in Longmont as so vitally important to the, to the community as they are. And I wanted to explain who's with me. These are members of the Bright Eyes Coalition. This is a collective that works on early childhood in Longmont. It's not just one city staff member, but it's truly a partnership across Longmont. And I have, I also have representatives from the National League of Cities. So, Katie Whitehouse, who's the senior associate with the National League of Cities. Amy Fontana, who's with the library, Children's and Teens section. Elektra Greer, who's head of Children's and Teens at the library. Tanya Rucker, who's a program director for early childhood at the National League of Cities. Janet Gutman, who's a community advocate in early childhood. And then Connie Seifert, who's assistant superintendent at the school district. So, thank you.
Well, if you'd step forward and accept your proclamation, council, please join us. Yeah, all of us. International Engagement. Is Ken Schweit, is it pronounced Schweitz? Shoots? Okay, well, we will come back to that when that person has arrived. Before we go on to first call, publicly invited to be heard, I'm sorry, Harold, but do we have a city's managers' report tonight?
No report, Mayor.
I knew that, that's why I didn't ask. First call, publicly invited to be heard. Everyone has three minutes to basically stand up and say whatever they want. First person on the list, Gordon Pedro.
Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive. Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and City Council members. A number of news articles this past week in the Denver Business Journal, Longmont Times Call, Denver Post, and New York Times provides a compelling evidence that members of the Longmont City Council deserve a heartfelt thank you for your fight to protect our community from the toxic and dangerous impacts of the oil and gas industry. I'm going to share just a couple of bits of information from a couple of these articles. The first one comes from the Denver Post, April 22nd. Seventy-three million to combat, combat dirty air. No Bold Energy, Colorado's second-largest oil and gas driller, has agreed to a nearly $73.5 million settlement with the state and federal regulators over front-range air pollution violations. The company's tank batteries were emitting thousands of tons of volatile organic chemicals a year, contributing to the region's ozone pollution problem, according to the analysis of the regulators. Oil and gas operators, operations account for 54% of the volatile organic chemical emissions on the front range, or about 576 tons per day, according to the state data. The volatile chemicals are a key ingredient of ozone, a corrosive gas that can impair breath and exacerbate respiratory ailments. Of course, enforcement action was primarily accomplished by the U.S. EPA and the U.S. Department of Justice, not our governor nor the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It appears that the COGCC continues to see its primary regulatory role is to provide political cover for the oil and gas industry by using flowery rhetoric regarding Colorado having the most comprehensive regulations in the nation. On April 23rd, an article in the Denver Business Journal, Federal Report Finds Major Increase in Earthquake Activity. And this says, USGS Reports Found that Earthquake Activity Increased Drastically from 2000 to 2009 in 17 States, Alabama, Arkansas, Colorado, New Mexico, Ohio, and Oklahoma, and Texas, primarily because of increased oil and gas drilling operations. And finally, April 29, 24th, Denver Business Journal, Colorado AG Says Feds Went Too Far in New Fracking Rags. Bottom line is, it appears that you, the city council, are truly trying to protect our environment, our quality of life, and the citizens of Longmont, not the state of Colorado, not the COGCC, not the Attorney General, not the governor. And for that, I want to thank you profusely for your continued fight to see that our community is protected from this toxic industrial operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Anyone else want to thank council before we go on to James Kenworthy? James Kenworthy is next on the list now.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I've lived in Longmont for almost 30 years, if that means anything. It doesn't. Last Wednesday's event, the youth, the youth festival, I was there, and I saw some of you there. It was really encouraging to see that. A lot of children and teenagers were in there having a good time, learning a lot of good things. 1,133 people, something like that. Those people care. They care about their, they care about the place where they live, Longmont, Boulder County. And I just have to come and say that for every person that was there, there are dozens and dozens of people that weren't there. And I want to read off a few statistics. As you know, that was a zero-waste event, and that event generated 37 pounds of compost, 19 pounds of recycled material, and four pounds went to the landfill. I just saw that today on the, on the internet. And while I was reading that, I used to work for Rotary International when I was a young man. Wasn't very long, because that was a really boring job. And I wondered how many pounds, if the Rotary Club ran that event, how many pounds would they send to the landfill? We don't know. But I also wondered about the difference in populations between members of the Rotary Club and the members of the, the people that were, the citizens that worked at that event. There's a difference, and I'm not going to talk about the difference. I will leave that to you to think about. And I'd like to thank Gordon for bringing that information. And yes, thank you, City Council, and that's a first.
Thank you, Mr. Kenworthy. All right, is anyone else who'd like to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings, specifically section actually valid. You announce those typically? Oh, do you, do you want to come up and take your three minutes, sir? Come on up.
I'd like to be a member of the society.
Do you want to name, can you say your name?
My name is Moven Arig. And I'd like to be a part of the society and the city and the country, country as a whole. I've been here before, and you've seen me. And all my inputs are always about, you know, being inclusive, regardless of what we go through as, as individuals. And, 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 and I've always been talking about humbleness. And I'll repeat it again. You know, you are on your own, it's, it's not so good. It's not so good. You know, you know, we have ups and downs. I fell several times, but I got up. Somebody has to, you know, give you a helping hand to get to where you need to go. So, I repeat again, I was born and raised in Africa. I just moved here as immigrants. And I've done everything that I could to make sure that I succeed. I have no family. I'm the only one here. No sister, no brother, no cousin, or so forth. So, I'm appealing that not everybody is, is doing it right. Some people made different choices, but not everybody makes those same choices as City has to do something. That's all. Thank you. I'll repeat it again. Thank you.
Now, that concludes our first call, publicly invited to be heard, and we'll move on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, our first item is ordinance 2015-23, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. There is no formal staff presentation on this. Teresa's in the audience to answer questions.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from my fellow council members? Seeing none, we will open it up for public hearing. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion on this item? And if not, can we have a motion? Oh, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I move ordinance 2015-23.
The vote is unanimous with Mayor Coombs and Bonnie Finley absent.
Your next item is ordinance 2015-24, a bill for an ordinance approving rebate of development-related fees with Island Incorporated. And there is no formal staff presentation on this item?
Before we solicit questions, comments, et cetera, from council, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, after last week's meeting, asked me to pull the item from the agenda. What I was hoping we could do is have the public hearing so that Councilmember Finley and the mayor can watch it before next meeting, and then we can take our vote. Does anyone object to that? Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Is there any time sensitivity to this? I mean, with next council meeting won't be till May 20th or something like that? Regular session? The 12th is a regular session?
When is the next one?
May 5th.
That's next week.
Regular session.
We believe next week would be fine.
May 5th is the next regular session.
So, understanding that, do we have any objection? Okay, great. Then let's move on to the, first of all, is there, are there any questions, comments from council members that are here tonight? All right, with that, we'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-24. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll now close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion from council? I saw your hand twitch, council member. Oh, okay, all right, well, we don't want to make the motion yet, but... Oh, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Well, since we, there is a consensus of council, but I'm, I'm sure the attorney will flinch if we at least don't make a motion to at least postpone this item into the next, to the May 5th meeting. So, I would move that we, since we've had the public hearing, that we postpone action on ordinance 2015-24 until the next regular session meeting, which is May 5th.
The vote unanimous with the requesting council members, including Bonnie, Bonnie Finley and Mayor Coombs absent. I really wanted to rename you tonight, Sarah. Poor Bonnie, yeah. Stinks to be her. Sarah Finley sounds so much better. No, just kidding. All right, ready? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda and introduction and reading by title or first reading, ordinances with our belovedest city clerk.
Thank you. First item is 9A, Resolution 2015-27, loaning excess earnings in the city's fleet fund to the city's general fund and providing for repayment of the loan from the city's general fund. Item 9B is Resolution 2015-28, authorizing a loan from fund balance in the city's fleet fund to the DDA construction fund and providing for repayment of the loan from the DDA tax increment, income fund. Item 9C is Resolution 2015-29, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the regional air quality council for air quality planning services in 2015. Item 9D is Resolution 2015-30, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for parent education services. Item 9E is Resolution 2015-31, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for exegesis program. Item 9F is Resolution 2015-32, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds parking lot for Rhythm on the River. Item 9G are legislative updates. Staff's asking for a position of oppose on House Bill 1530, 1348 concerning the Urban Renewal Fairness Act. Item 9H is approval of two capital improvement program amendments, CIP, PR 150, the Quail Campus Master Plan improvements, and PB 7, fleet building expansion. And item 9I is asking for a position for council to remain neutral on Senate Bill 15135 regarding county representation on urban renewal boards. And there is no need for staff to pull any items from this agenda.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I just would like to pull G and I just for a short discussion and request for council action beyond just the positions we take. So, G and I please remove. And then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus G and I.
Let's go ahead and vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Bonnie Finley and Mayor Dennis Coombs absent.
Item G is your legislative update. Sandy Cedar is here to answer questions, I guess.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, Sandy, can you just, for the viewing public out there, and just in general, give the council an idea of how really bad this bill is? Like, the worst of the worser and the worst?
Yes, absolutely. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. House Bill 1348, which is concerning urban redevelopment fairness, which is kind of an interesting title. As you probably know, for years and years, the counties and the cities have been in contentious conversations about urban renewal authorities. Municipalities have the ability to designate urban renewal authorities. They are allowed to be urban renewal authorities if they so choose, and designate different lands for tax increment, potential tax increment financing, which is to resolve blight and essentially redevelop urban areas that, that are beginning to fail. The counties have had lots of arguments about this, because as part of this, tax increment is not current tax, it's not base tax, it's the increment that's generated when a land is redeveloped. So, it doesn't really happen, the taxes are never created unless the area is redeveloped. Of course, it can be, there can be also taxes that are around an urban renewal area that are increased when there's a URA that is redeveloped. But essentially, the tax increment is, is those taxes that don't exist today. And so, municipalities and urban renewal authorities are allowed to essentially pledge future tax revenues in order to create bonding authorities or COAs or other things in order to do the projects today. What this bill essentially does is it requires for there to be several new members of the urban renewal authority, including counties, special districts, and school districts that are affected by the urban renewal area land size. But I think more importantly, it talks about a specific split of revenues. And so, right now, we can pledge any percentage of the future property tax revenues. We can do the same with sales tax if we choose to, but as you all know, some of those negotiations are very tough to work through. And so, what this bill does is it says you have to negotiate with the other entities, the school district, the counties, the special districts, et cetera, if you're going to pledge any portion of those future tax revenues towards this redevelopment. In order to figure out what are their impacts, which is already part of the law, but also, if you're going to take a specific percentage of those tax increment pieces, you also have to pledge similarly the same thing for sales tax. This gets to be a dicey area, because when you redevelop land within a municipality, sales taxes are used to provide different services like police and fire services. Those things don't usually go away with an urban renewal area, whereas oftentimes, school districts are usually, you know, they get backfilled by the state, which of course is another issue from the state's side. And counties use a lot of this revenue for their general fund, but it's not specifically an impact to them or their services, otherwise we would have identified it in the first segment of the process. So essentially, what this bill does is it forces specific percentages of sales tax to be used for urban renewal authorities, which puts a pretty big chilling effect on all economic development throughout the state if passed.
And I guess, right now, where does the bill stand? I mean, it passed out of the House last week, and where does it stand in the Senate?
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Councilmember Levinson, I think it's still in Senate Committee, was the last thing that I saw on it, was that it's still sitting in Senate Committee. Conversely, Senate Bill 153, 135. The other one that you're going to be taking a look at is the CML Compromise Bill, which was amended to essentially do additional splits of revenue. I mean, in this case, in these cases, it really, they're talking about the revenues for the counties, and that's the concern from the county side. The concern from the city side is, hey, this is really the biggest redevelopment tool that we have, and it's one of the best ways for us to do it, so don't take that away or dilute it with bills such as these.
And I guess, I just want to ask council members if you know folks in the State House beyond our state senator, and as a member of the Colorado Municipal League Board representing large cities, they took a very strong opposed position, and I have, as a CML board member only, contacted Senator Jones. But this bill, not only is it draconian in the imposing of a split of percentages of sales tax, property tax, but when you have to include someone from a special district on your board, can you imagine? The Twin Peaks Mall has a special district. We would be forced to have the very person that, you know, we're getting, you know, urban renewal counsel from our attorney confidential around negotiating, that person would be in the boardroom with us. And it just goes so far as to be, not just chilling, I think the intent of this bill specifically was to kill urban renewal in any which way that they could think of it, you know? A thousand cuts, or a million cuts, however they want to look at it. But I also think it goes to the heart of the fact that the state, this is a tool that cities have, and the state can't preempt something that's really local authority. And this goes to the heart of, this is our city, and what we decide to do as far as partnerships with urban renewal, tax increment financing, it assumes that we're never going to talk to the other taxing authority, it assumes that basically we're children and we cannot make these decisions ourselves. So please, if you can pick up the phone or send an email to any state senator, anybody else you know, to persuade them to not vote for this bill. I just plead with you because this, I think it just would be the ruin of a lot of future projects, even some things that we might want to deal with Longmont. And it punishes cities that have used urban renewal in a tool, a tool that's effective, and we've only ever done it one time, and we carefully considered doing it, and we didn't enter into it lightly. I just, I can't urge you enough to pick up that phone or send that email to, if you know a couple of different state senators that are not Matt Jones, but also Senator Jones, please do that.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, I just double-checked, and it was introduced in the Senate today and assigned to the Finance Committee, so it did pass the House in 10 days, which is darn fast.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. How did our representatives vote for this in the House?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and Councilmember Santos, Singer voted yes, Representative Singer voted yes, Representative Foote voted no.
It's really, this is the second time that Representative Singer has hurt Longmont with this, by supporting this legislation. Do we have any indication where Senator Jones is?
So Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and Councilmember Santos, I did in anticipation of this council meeting, send him an email ahead of time, letting him know what I was going to be sending to you all and asking what his vote was going to be, you know, just indicating that we're going to be talking about it tonight, and I had not heard back from him yet.
Again, it's sad that the, one of the House representatives that represents Longmont, who we've talked to about urban renewal, and I have to agree with Councilmember Levinson, this is a very draconian bill, worse than that, but it seems that the county, in particular Boulder County, has aligned quite a few people against the city of Longmont. Have they ever responded to our request for fiscal impact of Boulder County?
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Santos, no.
That's unfortunate because we, no, we asked for that, and we asked for it when we had had our meeting at, with the county commissioners, and I believe their staff said, oh, we'll get it to you. So while we worked well with the county on some issues, this is one where we get no help.
Councilmember Santos? Not in order, but I know there's certain members of the media here that they might not understand, maybe you want to spend a few seconds and just explain in a little bit more detail what happened?
Oh, we, you know, we are required to, they'll take an education. Hopefully, we can get on the first try. And Sandy, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went through our urban renewal process, we had to go out to the other taxing entities, the county, the school district, to ask them what the fiscal impact, if any, would be if we were to dedicate TIF to this project. So far, so good? Okay. We worked very well with the school district. They gave us their blessing. We did not hear from the county. And again, at our little dinner that we have with the county commissioners, I brought this topic up again, that we still had not heard past the deadline, that they were supposed to, they have how many days to respond?
I think we gave them, I think they're allowed 30 days, and I think we gave them 60.
So after the 60 days, I hit them up again at that meeting to provide that to us, and here it is, how many years later? Two years later at least, maybe? We're still waiting for the fiscal impact from Boulder County. You know, this is supposed to work, and how we worked it in Longmont is going out and to those other taxing entities and said, this is what we'd like to do, this is how it's going to benefit our community, we don't want to hurt you. Does this work for you? School district said yes, Boulder County, still, we're waiting. We're waiting for the phone call to go to prom, and they still haven't picked up the phone. Prom's over, that ship done sailed. Now, the one thing I would suggest, the Councilmember Levinson's point about contacting other state senators, and I know there's others that wouldn't want to speak, but I would propose that we send a letter from the city of Longmont to the entire Senate about our opposition to this bill, and have Mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem sign it, and if... We could all sign it. More the merrier. But this, this doesn't work for Longmont, we have done it, we are a textbook case about how to do urban renewal. And there are those in House leadership that, and one in the Senate, that are just looking out for the counties and not for the cities as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Santos. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So with all these changes and all the requirements and the percentages of splits and the mandates of how this is supposed to work in this bill, I'm assuming that they're picking up an equal amount of liability for the project and responsibilities for success?
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Moore, very insightful question, no. No additional risk is being taken by the county or special districts.
So, in other words, it's a one-sided deal? And are both of these bills that way?
So Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Moore, the CML-sponsored bill 135 is a little different. It's just basically allowing representation on the URA boards. It does have a percentage split after bonds are paid off and things like that. I mean, it's acceptable to cities if you have to stomach it, but it's not helpful to urban renewal at all, I would say. It's their attempt, in my perspective, to try to get a bill on there and get something passed because people kept saying, well, there's not enough representation on the URA boards. So CML said, fine, we'll put some more representation on the URA boards. That bill came in and was really very slowly moving through the session. It was one of the first bills introduced as opposed to this one, which was introduced and 10 days later passed through the House. So it's important to note that there's no sales tax, there's no property tax that's lost to the counties or the special districts because the basis stayed the same and actually have some increasing value over time. It's the increment that would not be there without the development. And I think Councilmember Levinson is right, it's sparked by controversy from communities that aren't necessarily always using it the same way.
So if I ask you for an opinion, would you be able to give me an opinion on, do you think this would kill tax increment financing, is it?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and Councilmember Moore, I think it's really tough to kill tax increment financing, but this is, this is pretty big. It would be very difficult for us to do the urban renewal plan that we are currently in the middle of implementing if this bill wasn't effect, because what it would require is 100% of the sales tax increment going towards that, and it's hard to do that when you still have to provide fire and police services and the other things that the general fund pays for. So would it be impossible? No, there's another bill that was just introduced trying to stop the Gaylord project down in Aurora where the county and the city all agreed, and so now it's somebody else that doesn't agree with it. So there are all sorts of different nuances to it, so I don't think that it would kill it, but it would make most urban renewal projects way, way less feasible, including ours.
Thank you for your insight. Councilmember Levinson?
I appreciate everyone's comments on this. I think that in answer to Councilmember Moore's question, it would be like urban renewal tied up in a chair and, just like Stephen Hawking, it would be like Stephen Hawking in his early 40s with his condition, and now where he can, I mean, he controls everything by a blink of an eye. So urban renewal would be moving at the blink of an eye to make progress. And, you know, the point of this bill also, I think, the preemption is huge. The other point of the bill that we as a city, when we were constructing the financing for the project, negotiated that the increment on the mill levy that was just passed previously, like shortly a year before, for the school district was not going to go to the project. So we honored what the voters said was the purpose of that mill levy override, so we fulfilled, I think, honored a tabor issue, number one, and there were two that we are looking out for, the taxing entities, and to say, to make an assumption that cities never do or never will, I think is a false assumption. And this bill is based on a lot of, I think, inaccurate assumptions about what cities do, how sophisticated we are with judging what our own environment is, and our ability to understand what the financial implications are of what we do with tax increment financing. So I don't know if Councilmember Christiansen or Mr. Bagley had additional comments, but I would like to move that we oppose House Bill 1348, and also with Councilmember Santos's suggestion, draft a letter to all senators in Colorado and let them know of our opposition to this bill. And also, if you could send a copy of that letter to the Colorado Municipal League, please, that would be, and the governor, that would be lovely. Great idea. And I'd be happy to sign on to that. That's my motion.
Third. I don't have any other comments other than I'm fully in support of my fellow council members that have spoken. Let's go ahead and vote. The vote unanimous with Mayor Coombs and Bonnie Finley absent.
So now we're at the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
No problem.
Bonnie Levinson, you could say, right?
Yeah, Bonnie, Councilmember Levinson, yes, Bonnie Levinson.
So here we are at Senate Bill 135, which was introduced by Senator Martinez Jimenez, and we had not taken a position on this bill before. And I certainly understand the reasoning why the Colorado Municipal League went this route, because they were afraid of what we were just discussing, 1348 coming out of the House. And so this bill was a stopgap measure to respond to what they heard in conversations with counties, and the league supports it only because they wanted to start making peace on urban renewal, and this was an attempt to do that. And I understand why we're taking a neutral position, and it certainly, if it passes, would be the much lesser of the evils. Is that correct?
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Levinson, yes. I mean, the reason that the position is slated as neutral is because when I went back and reread the bill, it doesn't injure urban renewal, it's just kind of a pain. It doesn't help urban renewal also either, so that's why I put in a suggestion for neutral, but of course, it's completely up to the council on what position you'd like to take.
And the reason I pulled it off is to have a discussion with fellow council members whether or not we want to remain neutral on that, or do we want to do something affirmative? Do we want to try to cast our lot to say, you know, if you don't vote for 1348, we would accept Senate Bill 135? I'm still not sure about it. I understand the league's position, and as a league board member, I support their position on it, but I just wanted to, I don't know whether or not us taking a position one way or another would help. I can't tell, I, you know, want to hear your comments and comments of council members.
I've got a comment, if no one else has a comment, and that comment is, I agree with Councilmember Levinson to an extent, but I personally don't see the point. I mean, I understand remaining neutral so we don't ruffle feathers and we'll hope the other one doesn't pass, but the reality is, here in Boulder, as Councilmember Santos pointed out, we had a dinner, we invited them over for dinner, we asked for their input, and they didn't engage. So I think we did it right. I think that the city of Longmont's committed to continue doing it right, and having them invited to the party, you know, they were invited last time and showed up and still didn't vote. I really enjoy our county commissioners in Boulder County, and, but they didn't get back to us with the required information. So giving them seats on the council or the urban renewal board won't necessarily change the results of what we just went through, and I'm not a big fan of, you know, legislating to try to micromanage a situation. And so, I mean, I'm against it, but then again, all we're doing is opening up our board to two more members, and a lot of times, we're meeting as a board and voting up here, and what are they going to do, show up and take a seat? When they're not here, it just becomes awkward when someone's invited to the wedding and they don't want, using your dating analogy, Councilmember Santos, inviting them to the wedding, you know, preparing the cake, the food, setting the place, and they don't show. So, I mean, I personally don't see the benefit, other than trying to appease certain members of our state legislature. And so I personally am not for it, would actually urge us to vote against it because I think it would be problematic. I almost hit my button off, but I'm not going to do that tonight. Any other comments? Councilmember Moore? Sorry, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So the governor has said that he's wanting an urban renewal bill this session, is that correct, roughly?
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Santos, what happened last year, it was a similar bill to 1348, made it all the way through the House and the Senate, got to the governor's office, he vetoed it. And the veto letter essentially said, hey, you know, you're probably right, you probably need some representation on these boards, you should have a better say, we should be more transparent, but the revenue split doesn't make any sense, and it's too complicated, negotiations are too complicated to try to muck around with legislatively. So what CML then took from that was the governor saying, yeah, there should probably be some additional legislation, and that's what created their bill. They are trying to fulfill the side of the veto letter that the governor wrote that was what he agreed with.
Has he given any indication about what, if anything comes out?
You know, word on the street is that he probably would pass something this year.
Just pass something.
It does seem like 1348 is pretty much exactly the same types of revenue split. It does seem like 1348 is pretty much exactly the same types of revenue splits as what he vetoed last year. So in my mind, I think that would be tough for him to do, but other folks think that he would do it anyway.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in support of this bill. There's no skin in the game from the county again. There's others don't want to speak soon. I'd be in opposition.
Councilmember Moore. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I guess if we are opposing participation by counties or other entities in the one sense, why are we not opposing it in this sense?
So Mayor Protem Bagley and Councilmember Moore, honestly, if this was not a CML bill and they weren't trying to essentially go with what the governor said last year, this is a bill I'd probably bring to you with an opposed position. However, I think what they're trying to do is to put the olive branch out to ensure that we're being transparent and that we're being inclusive, which is what we're all about. So I guess we don't necessarily disagree with that tremendously. But like I said, usually I bring bills to you all to take positions on when either they're really helpful or really harmful. And this one doesn't really do either.
Well, I guess if the county was willing to put up the county courthouse as collateral, I could support this position. And here again, it's a preemption of local authority. And I am not in favor of taking a neutral position. I think we need to vote one way or the other, either up or down. So that's my opinion. Councilmember Christensen.
I am about to oppose it too for the reasons that we've already mentioned. This is a case of the more the merrier is not true. We don't, we operate in a very, a much more streamlined position because we can rapidly go from being city council to Laura and back again. And we don't have to line up three extra people, 10 extra people, some of which would be, as Councilwoman Levison said, the very people that we're trying to negotiate with. That doesn't make sense. So this whole bill, I don't, I think we should oppose it frankly. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
Well, and I'm going to advocate that we stay neutral or we do nothing on it for this reason. I think that at this point strategically with cities, because this is a CML bill, if we oppose it, that's going to be broadcast and say, you know, one of your major cities, large city category, is opposing this bill. And I think that people that want to promote another bill or want to say, well, this is the same old stuff from CML and from cities that we've been hearing, that you are not willing to give one inch on urban renewal. And I think that by taking an opposition position, this could actually endanger the position in general. We might get the worst bill as opposed to just stay neutral, let CML do their work. We don't have to agree every single time with what CML does strategically as a statewide advocacy member organization. So my feeling is, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, number one, to flesh out these opinions of council. And I have to tell you, there was not a unanimous vote for supporting 15135 at the executive board even. Because people, let me tell you, the mayor of Arvada had a hard time swallowing it. The Metro Mayor's Consortium came out to help promote 135 because they saw it as the best, strategically, the best interest of cities collectively to stockgap something that could even be worse like House Bill 1348. So I would recommend that we, I want to move that we remain neutral on it at this time and hope that neither one of them makes it because we have, we have like less than a week, we have a week to go. So let's hope they run out of time. So my motion is to remain neutral on 15135, however noting I appreciate your comments and discussion.
Second.
Councilmember Santos. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So where is this bill? Just in the Senate?
Just in the Senate.
It's not getting anywhere in a week. They have a lot of work to do other than this, a lot more important work than other than this. And while I agree with what Councilmember Levison said about supporting CML and I will vote because of that. Had the session been longer, I would have suggested, you know, neutral until such time when you see movement. If you see movement, I guess, I guess the council would like to know if this is passing the Senate right away and is going into the House. We, I hate to say, we need to have that type of notification. So if we need to have a special meeting just to have on one topic, which we can within 24 hours notification, we can do that.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Santos, there's different ways that you can do that. You know, you could, you could direct me that if it makes it through House Committee, that you want to oppose it. You could, you know, there's all sorts of different ways that you could make that motion if you chose to. This bill was introduced on January 28th, very early in the session and has been laid over. The second readings was laid over for two and a half months and for the third readings in the Senate has been laid over for one, for two weeks essentially. It's sitting there in Senate final reading and has been laid over daily for several days. So you could, you could make that motion in many different ways and not necessarily have to have another meeting or you could, either way.
The, I still, I'm going to vote against it and I don't see this, again, this reminds me of like after you're, you know, you're getting ready for your closings in a jury trial and you're like, how do you play it? What are they thinking? I don't think that this is about, this vote is not about ordinance 2015-24. Like you said, it's not going to get out. There's no time. But it sounds to me like Senate Bill, or I'm sorry, the Senate Bill HB 151348 has already gotten out of the House. It is flying through the Senate. So I look at this as we should send a no vote, like absolutely not, strong, saying, we don't want you to mess with the urban renewal authority, authority at the moment. Leave it alone. So I'd rather say no and send the message that the city is, you know, strongly against changing anything when the governor is only going to be faced with the possibility of signing 1038 or 1048.
1348.
10, or 1348. Councilmember Levison.
However, there are deals being made on a number of moving target issues down there. And so again, I want to caution by, you know, digging our heels in on the Senate bill. The other thing is we have a great advocate in its sponsor who is a former city council member in Thornton. And I think that on future, strategically, on future issues of interest to cities, to oppose a bill as a freshman senator, you know, I think that strategically, you know, we may not be doing, we may want to call on that senator to do other things. And so by opposing a bill which was a good faith effort on behalf of cities, I think would be unwise. So again, I want to advocate we vote yes on the neutral position and hope all of them die. And the governor says he will sign something like this.
Did you get that Karen? Councilmember Levison said that she hopes they all die.
Those two bills will...
All the bills.
Mayor Protem, that's our general stance, just so you know.
All right, anyone else? Then we've got a motion, I'm sorry, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I would agree with what Councilmember Levison just said. She's had a working relationship when it comes to municipal items with Beth Humenech. I've talked to Senator De Humenech many times, right before she took office in Austin at the National Agent Cities. I think that's a wise choice to maybe stay neutral on this bill and hope to get her to vote against the one we are indefinitely opposition to that has a better chance of being passed.
No further discussion. We've got a motion, a second. So let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes three to two by the hair of my newly struck face. It passes three to two, and I got to decipher all this, with Mayor Coombs and Bonnie Finley absent, and then Mayor Protem Bagley and Councilmember Moore voting no, and Sarah Levison, Councilmember Santos, and Councilmember Christensen voting yes.
Hard.
I know, I, it's hard. Yeah. Well, yeah, I just want to hear Councilmember Sarah. All right.
Mayor Protem, your next item of business is the priority-based budgeting update. Jim Golden will make that presentation.
Mayor Protem Bagley, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, City's Finance Director. So in February, we made three priority-based budgeting updates to you at your study sessions and we had 10 more to go and we were directed to take the rest of those presentations. And probably over the last two or three weeks, you got like all 10 of those at once, sorry to say. But once we got going, we just couldn't stop. And so hopefully they weren't too repetitious for you, but we wanted to make sure we did cover each of those 13 areas, all the attributes and the desired results. And in the last couple, if you did get to look at those, I did try to get a little bit more into the detail of how you could use the information in the reports to be able to find out more about individual programs. That's probably the most valuable aspect, I think, of the data that we were preparing for you. Otherwise, most of the updates were in summary fashion, so it's kind of hard to decipher down to, you know, what the individual program scores and impacts were. So anyway, what I also did in those updates that we taped is I identified a couple of questions that the staff wanted to bring back to you for direction. As we were preparing these updates, there are, and actually as we were scoring last year as well, we were identifying what we thought were some concerns with the approach that the Senate for Priority-Based Budgeting had uses and recommended that we use for a couple of the individual attributes. First is in the cost recovery program attribute. So in that respect, the principles of the CPBB are that the cost recovery of a program is only being measured if it's a service where the customer has a choice whether or not to use that service. So we have a lot of programs that do have a certain level of cost recovery and the largest of those being our utility or enterprises, which all do fully recover their costs through utility fees. But in fact, since most of them are monopolies and do not, the customer does not have a choice whether or not to utilize those services, then under those principles that we've been following, they do not get a credit for the cost recovery attribute. You know, we discussed this with consultants last year as we're going into that. Teresa and I both felt that that wasn't necessarily the approach we preferred, but we decided that we wanted to, you know, our intent last year was to do it by the book and by the recommendation of the consultants. And so we did it that way. I think coming back now, we still believe that a better approach might be to use the cost recovery of our programs regardless of choice. So that was the first recommendation we wanted to make to you for consideration. I can move on to the second one unless you wanted to have some discussion on that first.
Doesn't look like it, Mr. Golden.
Okay.
Oh, actually, Councilmember Levison would like to say a few words.
So what would it look like in reality? Would the scores for utilities go up or they go down?
They would go down, they would go up, I mean. So in fact, I think I referenced in the council communication and the update that our cost recovery currently is about $10.5 million from the tool for $183 million total budget underneath the principles that we're using. It would rise to over $100 million at least, and that's just an estimate because we don't have those scores in there. So it would make a big difference for a lot of programs, but certainly in the utilities area, they would all rise to a full cost recovery from right now a zero score more than likely or maybe a one in some areas to a full four score for that attribute.
And I thought the principle of priority-based budgeting is also to have a constant reassessment and self-evaluation by government of, you know, and the evaluation about whether or not there are others out there that provide the service in a more cost-effective way in a community. For example, you know, we do have as part of utilities, waste collection, okay? And City of Boulder does not have that. So they have, you know, certain contractors. So could we actually compare apples to apples to say, and I'm not suggesting we go to the model of not having our own trash pickup service because having experienced being at the mercy of Western disposal when I lived in that other community, I did not like the service I got. But is there still a way to effectively work in judging whether or not this service is something else that could be done more cost-effectively? And then the second part of the question is this is only addressing utilities. How about those other cost recovery programs where we may get a lot of benefit, but they don't recover, we may get benefit that's not a cost recovery benefit? For example, if we look at, we had the discussion about early childhood education and the investment the city makes in that. Well, we can't actually look at dollars and cents sometimes of, you know, supporting a program for early childhood education that might just impact a, you know, percentage of families and then not know how much we can actually put a dollar figure on that. So I guess, how's it affect not just utilities, but other programs?
Okay, so first, Mayor Protem Bagley, members of council, first I'll start with your first question. Well, let me go, let's start with the second question. So as far as the, well, it's the one I remember right now. You've been giving me a lot here, so we'll go back to the first one then after that. So we do have other attributes that we're using, okay? The reliance on the city to provide a program is another attribute which identifies that, for instance, there may be another source to receive a service fund from besides this city. Not taking into consideration efficiency, I think that would be very hard for us to measure and get a very, a hard number to be able to measure efficiency. But today, at this point, there is no performance measurement built into this process. But I think, so the attribute that we're talking about is the cost recovery, which is separate from the reliance on the city. So we've already recognized in the reliance on the city that there are other entities that might be offering a service. As far as the cost recovery goes for, and I was using utilities as an example, but all of the programs will be measured for a cost recovery, but on a dollar cost recovery. So again, that's something that we have the data to be able to measure. So any program in the general fund, there are some programs that do have a, anywhere from a 10% to a full cost recovery. That's the amount, the amount of the score will be based on what that percentage cost recovery will be. Okay? So the first question was, I lost it.
Good. It's Protem. Did I answer them both?
So I will move then on to infrastructure. So that is one of the desired results that the council identified last year. Now each of the desired results had some result definitions included with it and infrastructure desired result had four result definitions. And one of those was that we would preserve, protect, enhance the natural environment. So we went off and scored based on that definition and quickly realized as we were scoring that while this was identifying the natural environment, which we defined or interpreted to be, again, open space type projects and things like that, we did not think that it was identifying the built environment, the parks that we spend a lot of dollars to maintain. So as we did score for infrastructure, we did not give any credit for maintenance or infrastructure related to the built environment. Wanted to bring that back to you and see if you wanted to amend that definition to include the built environment. That would again, make some changes in scores, obviously mostly in the parks area, but it certainly was one that we thought was a missing link last year. So those are the two areas that we have recommendations for. And based on whatever direction you give us tonight, we intend to move forward with re-scoring just those programs that are impacted by these areas if they do change so that we will potentially have new program scores for the 2016 budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Councilmember Christensen.
I did, by the way, think that that last, the first issue you brought up was, is a good idea. good idea to change that. That makes sense to me because if there isn't a, to me, I don't understand why there'd be a difference between mandatory and voluntary programs. Anyway, on this issue, I also think that this is a good idea. I would rather see it rather than including it in the same question, I'd rather see it as a separate category of the built environment. Can we create a separate category? Because it's kind of a different thing.
Well, infrastructure actually is pretty widely defined. There are, there were four different result definitions. So we, I'm just pointing out that one of those four result definitions
Right.
is addressing the natural environment. The built environment would fit into that, of those four definitions, it would fit best into that one of those four. But we do think it's an infrastructure issue, so.
It is, yeah, it is. And it refers to our maintenance, for instance, of all the things that we maintain, which is a huge cost, so, yeah. Well, if that's the one that fits best in, I think it is important to keep it, to count it into the scoring of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison.
And it's how interesting how all of our worldviews are different. You're looking at parks maintenance when I look at built environment, because I live in a house that's 108 years old. The protection and preservation of the built environment that is the fabric of the history, you know, of the community articulated in the built environment is what connected with me. So I also agree that adding a built environment would also cover a range of services that we offer in historic preservation, in also adaptive reuse, and other things that are also blended into many of our plans as values in the city that we have talked about in other policy documents. So I do agree with the way that statement is written. And I also, if I didn't say, I just had to have those questions answered, I do agree on your assessment in the first issue about the cost recovery issue. So you can click the yes in both columns.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I am able to accept the staff recommendations to make these changes priority-based budgeting methodology.
Second.
Let's go ahead and vote. It passes unanimously with Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bonnie Finley absent. And I should, I keep saying absent every time I say absent. They are excused. They're not physically available to attend council meeting tonight. I should have done that at the beginning of the meeting. They are missed. We wish them a speedy.
They're all having a good time.
Yes, they're partying. But we wish them a speedy return, and so their absence is excused. So on to the next, and one of the final things, final call, public invited to be heard. It's an empty room except one person in the back. Feel like saying anything, ma'am? First time here? It's fun times, fun times. Welcome, welcome. So let's go ahead and wrap it up with mayor and council comments. Council comments, anyone? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just wanted to point out today that, I saw on the nine news this morning that Digital Globe is providing high-resolution satellite data to the Nepalese disaster recovery. They're providing that data online so people can identify structures, roads, places where people might be, help with the recovery efforts, as well as be able to help find their ways into these places that were destroyed. So Longmont was named as the home of Digital Globe, and I thought that was a pretty good shout-out to Longmont and the company in Longmont that's actually making a difference in the world, so I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Bagley. I would also like to congratulate the youth, what was the correct term, the group, Youth Friends of the Earth that put on the
Yes.
first festival, Earth Day Festival at the fairgrounds. I was, I think the first council member there because I had a meeting to go to at 5:00 o'clock, so I had to sandwich in something at the festival first. But I know others came, and I thought it was very interesting, great variation of booths from a four-year-old talking about statistics he had learned and attributes of various animals he had laid out on a table. He could tell you anything about these animals and what, you know, environmental effects were having on them, to people asking, another youth-led booth asking you to sort items into trash, compost, recycling, and I got a pretty good score. And didn't know if anybody else had tried it, to raptors and owls, live animals that are there, and just such a great blending of entertainment as well, some wrapping, environmental wrapping, which was interesting, and a great coming together of the community. So I want to thank city staff that were there and did a little bit of outreach on the comprehensive plan around transportation issues. I don't know how that turned out, but I'd be kind of interested to know. I also want to thank everyone for coming to the meeting, pre-session meeting with National League of Cities. It was a really big deal that they came to visit us in person again on this grant on early childhood education. And I also want to thank city staff for making the proclamation happen the week they were here, because I think the National Week of the Young Child was about two weeks ago, but it, we wanted to time it for them visiting. And then want to congratulate Longmont Area Economic Council for the great luncheon event highlighting businesses. And I thought all the businesses were nominated, they all deserve to win. It's just terrible that they all can't win. And then, let's see, there was one other item I can't even think of. I'm off to St. Paul tomorrow to attend the limited municipal government board meeting and summer conference in the spring. And I'm going to be bringing Longmont, as much Longmont propaganda as I can fit in the suitcase. And I have small snack bars for two moms in the raw who, you know, were one of the nominees in the category last week. And I have things I purchased to give to attendees, and then also a lot of goose books, and hope to spend a lot of time spreading the love about Longmont in St. Paul. So that's what I'll be doing the next couple of days. And I really appreciate everybody's work on these items as the session wears down to the legislature. One thing I would like to do, though, after the session is over, it would also be nice if we sent a thank you note regardless of how our legislators advocated or voted on issues. They did vote on issues that were of importance to us, that they voted the way we wanted them to vote. So I would like to make sure that maybe, you know, in the next week or so, we send them a letter of thanks, just saying, you know, it is a lot of work down there, a lot of long hours, and I think we just need to also, we got a lot of thanks tonight, and I know everybody thought it felt pretty good, and so I think we need to thank them for the work they've been doing.
Councilmember Santos. Thank you, Mayor Protam. Last, I can't even think, I was, I was sick on Monday and Tuesday. It was Wednesday when I went to, yeah, so Wednesday after I was feeling a lot better and didn't have strep throat anymore, I got to, and thank you for reminding me what day it was, that last week is just kind of a blur, went to Georgetown and talked with Gilpin County, Clear Creek County, and Jefferson County commissioners. They want to know about next light and how we have gone about setting that up, what we had to go through with the repeal of 152. I gave them as much information as I possibly could. Longmont and other very smaller communities are actually leading the forefront of municipal broadband. So, you know, it's not often that, I tried to get Tom or Harold to go, but they were both busy, so they got me. But it was nice, and actually, this was a connection through Dr. Cog, that I was asked to go to Georgetown and make a presentation on next light. Went very well. We, they actually hoped to, several commissioners and the gentleman that's putting it together for Clear Creek County would like to come and see our facilities, what we're doing, you know, see it being put out in the neighborhoods, you know, all the digging and everything else. So they had a lot of good questions, and they're trying to figure out exactly how they're going to get broadband up into mountain communities. So again, we lead by example and hopefully can help them out as best we possibly can. Thanks.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Councilwoman Santos, for representing us up there and spreading the word about people having some control over their own broadband services. I also wanted to thank the youth, what was that?
Youth.
Youth for the Earth Celebration. It was a lot of fun, and it was wonderful to see people of all different ages, and it was set up by the students themselves, but there was a lot of adult help. And the city also did a good job of helping out too with various booths like the Envision booth and things like that, so thank you to the city for doing that. I also wanted to remind people that this is, Saturday is our celebration of Cinco de Mayo, so come down and enjoy yourself and get some wonderful food and good music. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in charge of the meeting. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I have now remembered the last item. I read a lot of junk, everybody knows I read a lot of stuff all week, and I'm on a LinkedIn, a blog discussion group on muni wireless and broadband. And there was an issue that was linked to an article from, I believe Wired Magazine that said, the title was "The Real Reason Why Broadband Cannot Go to Everybody." And it was pretty much the argument that the industry is making to the FTC and the FCC that they are, and I believe we do not charge for access to right-of-way for utilities. They don't have to pay for the right-of-way access to put their structure in the ground or on the post. And this article proposed that cities are providing a challenge to private providers by imposing high fees and also difficulty getting access to lay the infrastructure to provide the service. So I'm going to bring this up with, I'll send Councilmember Moore the information, but I also think that we should forward this on to National League of Cities because once that goes in a national publication and it's erroneous information, I think we need to jump right on top of it because it absolutely goes to the core of spreading false information, inaccurate information, and stuff that our city has not done. And I think it's just another way of disabling cities by spreading false information about the work we're doing with this kind of infrastructure. So I'll send you the article, but it was pretty outrageous. And I sent it to a couple people and I said, "Well, what do you think?" And they said, "This is really not good and not accurate."
Okay, so we have no further comments. Why don't we go ahead and turn to the city manager for any final remarks? You're standing out.
So Mayor Council, I actually do have some remarks. Now, the problem's going to be whether or not I can see this, so.
Will they serve Russia?
Exactly.
Nice.
So you may be familiar with UCLAN. It's basically a service that you can do, utilize to test the speeds of your wireless connective, or your connectivity. And so to just give you a sense, if you look worldwide, the average is 23 meg worldwide. And so you can select Great Britain, and that looks like 30.8. And so then if you select the United States, somebody help me, 35.6. So that's what the average looks like and what people are able to do. So then if you look at the United States, again, you see the 35.6, but then you go to Colorado and it looks like 40. I may need a, I can actually see this one. So then we say, well, let's look at Colorado. And if you look at Colorado Springs, it's 38.1, pretty good. 44.5, pretty good, and Littleton, Broomfield, 44, Boulder, 43, look at Longmont, 102. Now, that's actually the average, and so.
Still way low. It's still low.
It's low because it's the average of all the providers.
That's what I mean.
So.
When we're hooked up.
So when you look at it, what's starting to drive that speed up is actually the people that were connecting to the next light service that's driving it to 102. And so if you really go down here and you say, okay, what's happening in Colorado? And you can look at Sprint PCS at 5.92, TDS at 22, but look who's number one, Longmont Power and Communication at 212. And so that's actually what the speed tests are that we're generating there. So here's a piece of information. Our next light and LPC folks are actually working with UCLAN to develop a speed test that will actually really test a meg, because when we're seeing 212, a lot of those are wireless devices that are testing it, so we're not getting the full speeds in the testing system. And so they're actually designing one specifically for the system we're building. And so then again, if you move through here and you kind of see what kind of service we have, the closest one to us is Parker at 53.47. Now, I want to show you another piece of information. So if you look at the United States, and you kind of go here and you go, well, what's happening in the rest of the United States in terms of where the states rank? And you can see that Colorado is number 11 at 40. And again, this is real-time data that we're bringing in. So I'm going to scroll down here real fast. And again, you can see Southern Link Communications, which you see in the South, Charter Communications, Cox, another large, 43.52, Comcast, 43.1. I will say that they're doing a pretty good job in terms of the overall speeds. Verizon here, but let's look at all types. And what you see when you look at where next light and LPC actually fits in terms of the nation, so you have Google Fiber, you have the iFiber, and then you have Longmont Power and Communications at third nationally in terms of the service that we're providing. And so when we talk about all this information, what this really means to the community, as I was getting ready to make a presentation at the Economic Development Conference, the next light folks, so you're going to start hearing me refer to them from now on as next light, not LPC. The next light folks, and Tom brought this to my attention, this has actually shifted my presentation for Thursday. This is what I'm going to talk about, because when we talk about economic development and what this means to our community, this is a very strong message to send. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to let council know this is what we're seeing in our utility in terms of the speed tests that we're running is really top three in the nation.
Good job.
Any questions?
No. They come into my house.
Yes.
So where's Chattanooga?
They were below us, and I can't remember. I'll have to get and actually find out the name of it because I was looking for Chattanooga, but it's obviously not that name. But when Tom and I reviewed this yesterday, they were below us. But again, they may have the same issue that we're having in the sense of you have all of these others, but then whether or not speed tests can actually truly test the speeds that are present in the system. But I thought this is some good information to share with council, let you all know where we stand and kind of how this utility's performing. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
City manager, when we ask for your remarks, we want those kind of remarks. Those were beautiful. City attorney, you going to let us down? Any remarks?
No comments, Mayor Protam.
Right, all right. With that, let's go ahead and adjourn.